Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Stricker.
Here.
Mr. Leachman.
Here.
And Mr. Wood.
Present.
And for our invocation tonight, I'm going to ask Leon, could you use your indication, please?
Be happy to. Let's pray. Your Father in Heaven, we thank you for the wonderful love that you've given us to your son Jesus, and we pray that you would watch over us tonight, that decisions that are made are good decisions for everybody, and we just pray that you continue to be with the city of El Dorado and keep us from harm for the weather to spin around and all the things that are going on. We ask for these things in your most presence name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of proclamations tonight that I have the honor of reading. Takes a minute on the iPads. This is Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include local, state, and federal government employees, teachers, health professionals, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and its elected officials. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal herein to that the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, is Public Service Recognition Week, and all citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on the fifth day of May, 2025. And let me find the next one here. Now. I mean, it would probably be easier, Leon, but.
That's all right.
Whereas bicycling is a healthy, economical, environmentally friendly form of transportation and recreation enjoyed by people of all ages. And whereas promoting bicycle safety is essential to preventing accidents and injuries and increasing public awareness of bicycle laws and safe riding practices. And whereas the city of El Dorado is committed to ensuring the safety of all who share our roadways, whether on bicycles, in vehicles, or on foot. And whereas it is important to encourage safe bicycling habits and to educate both cyclists and motorists on how safety, how to safely coexist on our streets. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bill Young, mayor of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th as Bicycle Safety Week. In the city of El Dorado, and I encourage all residents to observe this week by practicing and promoting safe bicycling habits in our community. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of El Dorado to be affixed on this fifth day of May, 2025. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agencies in El Dorado and throughout our nation play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and defending the innocent. And whereas the brave men and women of the El Dorado Police Department, along with law enforcement officers across the country, unselfishly put themselves in harm's way every single day to keep our communities safe. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, mayor of the city of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of El Dorado, and I call upon all citizens to honor and support our local law enforcement officers with appreciation and respect, and to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of El Dorado to be affixed this fifth day of May, 2025. Thank you to our public servants and our police officers, and these are, these are important proclamations for us to recognize. It's also important to remain safe around bicycles. We've got a lot of, we're a bike-friendly town, so, which is great. We're going to move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, no action will be taken. And tonight, we have El Dorado Main Street First Quarter Update. Emily, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Emily Canal, Director of El Dorado Main Street, and I'm filling in tonight for our Board Vice President Nicole Ensminger, who had a family priority. So we'll just get to it. So this is our first quarterly report of 2025. We do this beginning part at all of our reports because a lot of people don't know exactly what the structure of Main Street is. You all do, so bear with me for a little bit. El Dorado Main Street works to preserve historic buildings, support downtown businesses, and attract new enterprise, produce special events, and ensure quality experiences await in the downtown district. And we are a 501(c)(3). We can go through these pretty fast. El Dorado Main Street's annual scope of work is determined by the mission, our mission, which is here, which you all know, and the memorandum of understanding with the city of El Dorado, which is currently under review by city staff and Main Street Executive Committee. Main Street works with four major organizing principles: organization, design, economic vitality, and promotion. And that's how this report is ordered. Organization. In the first quarter, we have reinstituted, along with other partners and city staff, partner meetings, and that would be Main Street, Inc., the Chamber of Commerce and Experience El Dorado. And we are doing these the first Monday of every month. It's been, we, we had one today, and I think we are all looking forward to more communication and collaboration. A big thing for us, which we started the last quarter of 2024, was the accreditation process through Main Street America and the state Main Street Organization. Accreditation has been updated and made much more rigorous in the last three years, and we're happy to announce that we have been given full accreditation in El Dorado. We initiated Main Street Board Education and Training, monthly sessions that are conducted through, with Nicole Ensminger, our vice president. We worked on our quarterly reports, which we must submit to Kansas Main Street in terms of economic impact data in the downtown, and the first quarter of this year includes 251 volunteer hours. We've expanded our board this quarter, added two new members, and we submitted 2025 work plans to the city staff for review as part of, we anticipate the review of the MOU. And we've launched a new fundraising event. Most of you have heard about it. It's the Hot Shot Golf Challenge, which will be held on June 7th. It is not a golf tournament, it is a golf challenge, which is an opportunity for amateur golfers to compete for $6.3 million out at Prairie Trails. It should be a lot of fun, and we'll keep you posted, hope to see some of you out there. For $50, you get to shoot for $6.5 million. It's amateurs having a chance to make money closer to professional realms. And it's a new format originating in El Dorado. It hasn't been held, a golf challenge of this type has not been held in Kansas and probably in the United States, according to U.S. Amateur Golf. So we'll see where we go with it. Part of it is the golf challenge and the seven challenges for a ticket, and then there are raffle drawings. One is a gift to us from Prairie Trails, a one-year golf membership for our ticket. We're limiting it to 100 tickets at $50 each. We'll draw those on June 7th, Saturday. And then the big raffle is for the Pebble Beach Pro-Am AT&amp;T 2026. And that's three nights, all expenses paid, airfare for two, ticket to a VIP tent, and a $500 gift card. So please consider trying your luck with a raffle ticket. The odds are pretty good. For promotions this quarter, we have conducted the first assembly downtown. We do downtown assemblies every 90 days, beginning in February and going through the end of the year in November. Those are held at Charlie's, and we discuss timely topics and hope to have presentations from people who are the authority or the experts in whatever topic we're talking about. Thankful Thursdays. We are reviewing the programs currently. We postponed the beginning of the season. Thankful Thursdays for the last five years have been April through December. This year, we postponed the beginning until June because of all of the disruption that's now all being finished downtown, and we'll keep you posted on Thankful Thursdays. We've launched a new website, and as you all know, there's no such thing as a finished website. They're endlessly in progress, and ours is no exception. We've already started planning Old Fashioned Christmas and Trick or Treat down Main Street. The applications are in with the city for the 2025 events. We had to make some changes in 2024, and we want to make sure we're going back to our old parade route and that some of the details are discussed early, since we had some changes last year. We have hired, contracted with, a new communications coordinator, who will be working with our social media messaging. Design is to enhance the physical and visual assets that set the downtown district apart. And it's very exciting to work with the city's new initiative, Discover Downtown El Dorado, which was announced in February, and all of the positive things that are, will be happening throughout 2025 and beyond possibly. We're happy to remind people that we have a downtown master plan, Good to Great, which is based on an extensive survey process, so that all of the things that have become a priority for the city are referenced in that plan, and some new, new ones and, and better ones. So it's great to see these changes launched downtown. We have the Veteran Banner Committee. They're meeting and expect to have 70 new banners. There's some changes in size and display options and timing. We had to cancel the veterans flying, those banners flying last fall because of disruptions downtown. So they'll be flying, they plan to fly the banners over Memorial Day weekend, as well as during the Celebration of Freedom, to make up for that vacancy last year. We are happy to announce we have received a $10,000 Artscape Grant from a private foundation to install a new sculpture. If you look at this, this is the one that's being considered, that would be, we're, we don't have the location determined yet, but it will be in, in relationship to McDonald's, and it will have a commemorative plaque, which will describe El Dorado's history with Little League and all things baseball El Dorado. And then the audio system is still in process, and Tabitha, help me with this one. The funds for excess sales tax 2023 are still in place for the audio system. Are they not?
The funds are still there.
Right. So we're looking forward to that, moving forward. We were able to share the old Main Street facade grant program with the city staff in case they are of help with the new facade program that is being crafted by the city as part of our reawakening and the downtown with support from the city, which is very exciting. And we have reinitiated the Historic Building Biography Program with several historians in town, and we're scheduling three free, open-to-the-public lectures on various buildings downtown and their history. Economic vitalization is our primary focus these days, and we focus on sources of capital, incentives, and other economic and financial tools to assist new and existing businesses, catalyze property development, and create a supportive environment for entrepreneurs and innovators to drive the local economy, project by project. And you are all familiar with the IWW Loan Program, and currently, we are administering nine loans. We have active applications awaiting available funds, so that continues to serve. And we, in the downtown, as you all know, through the city, a moderate income housing grant was awarded, Masonic Building, we've been working on that with Sun Group Realty for several years, and before that, and before that. And we're very excited that it's moving forward with frontier development, and so appreciate the cooperative and encouraging environment that the city has offered to the developers who are doing this project. It's meant a lot to them, and it certainly shows a real commitment to taking care of some of our old, very problem buildings downtown, turning them into assets from liabilities. And we were awarded a Heal Grant that was applied for through Main Street for $100,000, and that's recently announced, and that's wonderful because it's going to help move forward for a new restaurant downtown at District 142. And a tourist attraction grant has been submitted for the Wiffle Ball Stadium to help move that forward. So what's next, Tabitha? A Rooms Grant has been announced. It's been around for a while. We keep announcing it and reannouncing it to second-story property owners. We encourage realtors and potential investors of the Rooms Grant and the Heal Grant. They can be used as a mutual matching. So one of the things we've been looking at in terms of second-story development, and this is complicated, but it's very interesting. Some years ago, and some of you might remember, that there was a project that took the second stories of all the buildings, just go to the Ellet, and then to the Speck's Building, Eyewear Junkie, and then Robin's Building with its over 3,000 square feet, and then the Enns Mortgage Building. Those second stories, at one point, including the property that burned, the Photographic Studio and the Pizza Building, that was all planned to be connected at the second-story level with an interior hallway and entrances, not only on Central, behind the Speck's Building, and up that way, you all remember, there's an arched, very nice entrance to the second story there, connecting all of those buildings as apartments. And so we are relooking at that. It's, of course, it's smaller with the, the Pizza Building and the Photographic Studio gone, but it's still a viable project, and it's a great design and could be very efficient. So we're just exploring that feasibility, which is taking some doing, but nevertheless. And we've been looking at potential multi-story development for the Smith Building. You know, the old St. Luke's Hospital. And we'll keep you posted on developments with that. It is currently listed with Sun Group. But it has wonderful potential for the downtown. We're working on the Historic Tax Rehabilitation Credit application, working with the owners of the Knowles Building, and we were able to get facade design, free design help, and rendering through Kansas Main Street, and that's in process for the facade part of that tax credit. So we'll see how that goes. It seems to have a life of its own in terms of timing, but progress is being made. Just as a reminder, around the Main Street table, we have city leadership, downtown business owners, Experience El Dorado, the Kansas Preservation Office, project funding resources, media, downtown property owners, qualified developers, real estate agents, all working to move the downtown forward. And it's, that's the exciting and most fun part about Main Street, is collaborating and helping all of those people around the table achieve their goals and achieve ours. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
I like that sculpture.
Pardon?
I like that sculpture.
Oh, I'm glad you do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Emily.
You're welcome.
Next, we have public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction, the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during the planning commission meeting. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Come on up, sir.
I'll get there, I'm slow.
It's all right, we've got time.
Your Honor, I'm here to defend this individual. My name's Tom Hermrich. I've lived in El Dorado 30, 35 years, retired. I did a survey for Main Street, what kind of businesses I wanted downtown, and one of them was a bike shop. And lo and behold, this guy shows up. And buddy, do I have work for you. I've got lots of bikes, and I, I help kids out in the neighborhood with their bikes, give them helmets, flashing lights, you know, whatever I can do to help the kids, because I, I live on Arlington, and it's a two-block street. A great neighborhood, great neighborhood, but there's a lot of traffic in there. It's just what you'd expect on a two-block street. Deliveries, you know, the whole works. And I, you know, I got really concerned about the little kids, so I, I had a bunch of old helmets, I fixed up, put new padding in, put lights on them, and bicycles, he's helped me fix up some bicycles for them. And I really enjoy watching kids bike El Dorado. You know, and I was thinking, El Dorado's a city of gold, is that what they call it? Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we, I think we are living in a city of gold. Bicycling in this, in this town is highly underrated. In this county is highly underrated. What I see is a cycling paradise here, in this county, in the city. And, and you've got a crowd of 300,000 people over there that would like to ride bikes through the Flint Hills, through El Dorado. And I think, I don't know what it takes to start a bicycle club or anything like that, but from my viewing of El Dorado, there is a lot of traffic going to that lake with bicycle racks on the back. So why are they going to the lake? Why don't they stop here in town and take the bicycle path out to the lake? You know, which would stimulate, obviously, Main Street or downtown. Anyway, I, I see a great vision for El Dorado, and it's going to have to start with us. I talked, I talked to her about, went back, we went out to the lake and drove around and looked for different biker racks, routes, and there's some amazing gravel roads around here, and people are really into gravel roads. You know, Aaron's into BMX, that's, that's okay. And I'm into road bikes, you know, I got, my bikes are 50 years old, you know, made in France, so that's, that's how old I am. Anyway, I, I just want to see El Dorado, take this opportunity for cycling, and, and blow it up. I mean, you could have, you know, you, just, we are not the Oz, like so many cities in Kansas are. We're the city of gold. We're not Oz, but you can get there from here.
That's right.
And you could have, you could have, I've driven a lot of these county roads, most of them, I think, you could have like a, a route here in town. I strongly encourage you to do whatever you can to get that route extended out to Butler County, and make that a, a, a real stop on, on the trail. But anyway, I'll shut up and let her talk. I just, as a taxpayer, citizen, whatever, I'm interested in cycling, and I think El Dorado is, is missing the boat. We've got, we've got groups from Augusta riding up here to the brewery, drinking a beer or two, and then riding back.
Yeah.
You know, we got, it's all around us, and I haven't seen any bicycling activity since the prison had, oh, some fundraisers, I think, for the Gospel Hall or whatever they got out there, so. Anyway, that's who I am, that's what I like. I'm encouraging to you or whoever to think about this, because on weekends, you could, you could flood downtown, you know, you already, you got Wiffle Ball, but not bicycles.
I agree with you, I think a bike's the best way to see.
But, you know, I need to get on.
So I rode, I rode across the state one time, and it was.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Isn't that fabulous?
It was a lot of fun.
Oh, and the Flint Hills, so you can, you can go out here to Cassidy and ride to Roselle on a beautiful road, my son used to ride all the time, and there's hundreds of horses out there, wild horses.
And Kansas is not flat. I guarantee you that.
I, I can testify to that, yeah. So, hope to thank you.
I would like to thank you for helping out kids in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Fixing bikes and helmets and all that good stuff. We need more of that in the community.
Well.
I appreciate that.
Funny you should say that, because I was going to say, is there any way you can have the street painted with a bicycle, not a lane, but kind of a bicycle route? Salina has that. Salina has, has bicycle signs painted on the road, but they're not necessarily a lane, it's, it's a route. So you're aware that if there's a bicycle in that lane, they have the right to be there. It's, it's just, you know, different cities run things.
Yeah, we've explored some of that in our transportation plan. We've got some of those.
Yeah, well, you have one out there by the golf course.
Yeah, for sure.
That's great, people walk it, ride it, yeah.
Country road stuff.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So feeding off of that, I don't know, I'm sure you have seen the crowd that's in the parking lot. We're bringing in ramps, we just brought in a new half-five yesterday and got it put inside. These kids need this. We're taking them to Tulsa, most of our team is going to Tulsa for their first national Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If you want to watch, it's on USA BMX Live, YouTube TV, so you can watch your local team. Go down there and represent. Eight out of, so everybody that I've been racing in town is hitting the podium every race. We've got, we've got three riders that have took nothing but first place six races in a row. Now, our tracks are, two local tracks are running at Emery Park, and Park City are now putting on, we've been getting a race a week, so they're getting a race two times a week instead of just once a week at Emery. As soon as school gets out, we will go. As soon as school gets out, we will go four times a week racing. These kids, they, we need to, we need this, we need this real park. I know that there's bad blood there, whatever, USABMX is here to help us. I don't know if you've seen the petition that's up online, it's getting great response, I believe. I hope that the city is all about that. As far as, I want to get with, I give away more bikes and helmets than I sell. My bikes are high-end, it's not for the average rider, they're not Walmart bikes, they don't fall apart like Walmart bikes neither, most of our bikes have warranties. That being said, I've reached out to the police department, the city has even said that maybe I could get some bikes from you guys that are confiscated, stolen, whatever, going to auction instead of the dump. The city is, is doing their best to bring in the stuff that sits the curb, and I'm talking the city people, not the city, the residents of the city. And those bikes, you know, are from Walmart, so they're in the trash for a reason. So we, if you look, drive by today and see in front of the shop, there is probably fifty bikes that we are taking apart, or that are end pieces, just to make maybe one or two out of the stuff that is salvageable. The city wants bikes, these kids want bikes, the parents want bikes. I've done four bikes last month to, to the halfway houses in town for the rehab, the girls and boys. We have a bike to pick up at SAC, I just haven't been able to get up there to do one for them. Any help would be appreciated. These bikes that get donated, get donated back out, they get put money back into, and I personally am poor, and if I put a tube in every free bike that comes in, if it just needs one tube, at minimum, you know, that's ten dollars per free bike that I'm giving away. It's, it's, I, I can't do it, but I want to do it, but I just need some help.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that.
I would like to say a couple of things. One, on that BMX trail they got back here, you guys here? I go down there with my remote-controlled Bronco, and I run that little one-eighteenth scale Bronco through the works. And half the kids I've talked to down there are from Wichita. And I said, what are you doing over here? Oh, it's only twenty minutes, my folks are in here. And I'm going, they bring the kids from Wichita, which is more than twenty minutes, to Eldorado to ride that park and pick, I'm going, oh, man, that's crazy.
That's great.
You know, my grandsons like to ride it too, so.
I forgot all about that. So if you look at these, at these BMX tracks, most of them have a sanctioned RC park connected to them. So I don't know if that's something that, that is a package deal when you get with your park builders or whatever, they come in, but that, that keeps, so them RC cars do tear up. Believe it or not, they do tear up, just like mountain bikes tear up BMX tracks, you know. Skateboard ramps are not made for bicycles, you know, every, everything has its place. So I think that once we get the ball rolling, everything will feed off of each other, and you will have people from all, when we, when we go down to Yukon, Oklahoma, they've got one of the nicest RC tracks that sit next to their amazing BMX track. And it's all gated, you know, you, you, you don't have to worry about the vandalism, because it's getting locked up at night by park officials, or you've elected city members to lock up after the event. So I think that if you guys, once we all get to looking at it, it'll, it'll, it'll work, it'll definitely work, we just all need to get together. I've, I've went out and got insurance to hold events from, from Michael, I'm doing everything I can for you guys.
I appreciate that.
So, sorry.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I, I, I think, I think this is a serious business.
Oh, absolutely.
Cycling, I'm telling you, Kansas, yeah. In fact, that route from Cassidy to Rosalia is part of the international, or the National Bike Trail. My God, you've got eighty miles of that road right through our county.
Yep.
You know, so, but anyway, I would like to say, if any of you have any questions or want me to help or whatever, my advice, which is free.
Best practice.
Please give me, give me a call.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for sharing, thanks, sir. Anyone else for public comment? So on tonight's consent agenda, we, we do have our liquor tax distributions to Sunlight Children's Advocacy, Family Life Center, and Tri-County. Is there anyone that would like to comment about that? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and on tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of City Commission meeting minutes from April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, approval of our annual liquor tax distributions, eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars to Sunlight Children's Advocacy Center, seventeen thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars to Family Life Center, and ten thousand three hundred five dollars to Tri-County CASA. And we're also considering the approval of the first quarter financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing under old business, so we're going to move on to agenda item number twelve, under new business, approval of bid award for airport taxiway lighting project and, excuse me, and related agreements.
Mayor Commissioners, we opened bids for our project, we'll just call it number eighteen and number nineteen, since it's a little bit confusing how that's, that's done this year. This is our annual ACIP projects for Airport Improvement Plan. These are funded at ninety-five, five, and ninety-ten. Fortunately, we have, we've been very fortunate each year to obtain the projects that we want, so we're to the less critical projects now, so these are more of the not safety necessarily related, but just, just improvements for the airport itself. Rehabbing runway, taxiway, B and C for the edge lighting. When we did our airport, when we did our LED retrofit project out there, which was actually funded at one hundred percent by the federal government, because it was during COVID, it was about a three hundred-plus-thousand-dollar project that was funded at a hundred percent. We didn't do some taxiway lighting, because the taxiway lighting wasn't old enough to meet the criteria to be replaced yet. Now it has met that criteria, it was, it was less than ten months from making it at the time, but we weren't going to argue. So that one, we're getting, we're getting B and C edge lighting, and then rehabbing the rotating beacon, which is the green and white light that you see at the airport that goes round and round and round, as well as some other electrical work to, to make those things all go through. We ended up with good bids, we feel like, we had four bidders. They came in, the, the low bid was substantially under the engineer's estimate, and so I think it's our portion seventeen thousand some odd dollars.
Sixteen?
Yes, it's sixteen here.
Yeah, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars would be our portion for about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of, worth of work. So this is a ninety, this is one of the ninety-ten ones. There's two different grants, so it, hmm?
This one's ninety-five.
Hmm, okay. So this is done in two different ways, because there's two different grants that are, that are funding this one, so.
Okay.
And I'll answer any questions that I, that you have about it, if you have any.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to award the construction contract to Third Generation Electric for project implementation.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number thirteen, City Commission, vice.
There are three motions on that item.
All right, I'm ready for the second motion.
Okay, I move to approve amendment number one to Olson's professional service agreement, Olson Project Number zero-two-four-zero-seven-zero-six-nine, to include construction phase and close-out services.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I move to authorize city manager to sign FAA grant application, and for the city manager and city attorney to sign an acceptance of subsequent FAA grant once received.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, agenda item number thirteen, City Commission Advisory Board updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Wilkins.
Well, Emily pretty much gave my speech, so I won't repeat it, except for, again, the no-golf challenge, what is this, hotshot challenge, just to remind everybody, June seventh. Otherwise, Emily covered it all.
Thank you. Much obliged.
No comment, we're going to have a meeting here for too long on the city of gold project, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Scribbler.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Tector.
Nothing to report.
I don't have anything to report either, so we'll go on to our city manager update.
Okay, well, this week, as you mentioned, your calculation is Public Service, or I'm sorry, Public Service Requisition Week. So we are actively promoting, not only talking to employees about their jobs and thanking them for the work they do, but also it's a great opportunity just to get out from the public and kind of communicate the importance of public service. Not only do we provide quality services that are public needs, I mean, the essentialness of, of quality water and wastewater that goes away, streets that get bathed, I mean, I think sometimes these projects can be seen as an inconvenience, but when they're all done, I think everybody can appreciate the fact that our streets are paved and they're well-maintained, parks are cared for, and that there's clean water when we turn on the faucet, and our wastewater goes away when we flush the toilet. And that couldn't be done without our employees, who, most of them, others who work behind the scenes, to do the work that make our community work. So on behalf of the city, I want to thank them for the work they do, many of whom work twenty-four-seven shifts or work hours that are when we're sleeping. And many other departments also come in when needed, as conditions arise, whether that be flooding, or snow, or whatever the situation warrants, to provide those services that our community needs. So thank you to all of those fine individuals. Couple of updates on some projects, the engineering department has been putting together some cost estimates for infrastructure to serve not only development to the north, but also development to the southwest, and we'll be bringing that information to you all for conversation in the near future, as we begin to plan for future growth. We also interviewed three engineering firms for the Safe Streets for All Safety Action Planning Project. This is the federal government's new transportation program, and it's kind of divided into two phases. The first is the planning phase, which we are in now, and then, once you get that phase completed, you will identify projects that can then be applied for federal funding for This obviously comes after our transportation master plan was completed, so many people might be like, well, why are we doing another plan? This seems kind of like we're just planning. The good news is that our transportation plan, or master plan that we recently completed, will actually help us shorten the process for the Safe Streets for All Plan, because it's identified some of these things in advance. It's also collected some public input that we hope to use for SF for a process, but then we'll also be providing another process to get people's input for additional safety projects specifically. So the master plan will be looking at transportation, the whole transportation system, and the improvements that might be needed for growth or for efficiency. This plan, this project here, will be looking solely at safety, and how do we make our systems safer. So we'll be looking at accident information and a whole host of other information to kind of develop recommendations or actions that can then be put into the implementation plan for future direction. One of the things that we're going to be focusing on is going to be our light pedestrian networks, because we do know that we get a lot of people that utilize those, those routes. So that'll be coming soon. Speaking of transportation, I'm sure if you've been out, you've seen Central Avenue, and the paving's been going underway. We'll be getting some weather here the next couple of days, but they're making good progress mowing that, and I think right now the only thing that's left is the center lanes, and then they'll come back following week to do water valve and we'll add adjustments, and the project will pretty much almost be completed, so bearing any cleanup and last items. So, let's see, other than that, I think that's all we have to go on right now.
Can you make a comment about mowing grass clippings into the street?
So city regulation prohibits the mowing of grass, or placing the grass, placing grass clippings into the street. We ask folks to aim their mower so that the grass clippings blow into their yard as opposed to in the street. The primary reason for that is because grass clippings, while they seem innocuous or rather harmless, they do get into the storm system, and we have other material that's in the storm system, for example, large limbs, trash, and if we get large rains, that can actually have the effect of plugging up the sanitary, the storm system, and then that can lead to localized flooding. So we encourage folks, either bag your grass clippings, or if you can't do that, turn your mower the other way, and your mower will blow it into your yard, which is actually good, because it actually provides a little bit of mulch for your yard, which is helpful from that standpoint as well.
I guess one more thing that I wanted to just remind everyone, in the next couple of weeks here, we've got high schools, schools ending, high schools are going to be graduating, so if you've got high school or college kids that either graduate, be sure and congratulate them on their efforts and their path forward. And then the summer's rolling around, we've got a lot going on this summer in Eldorado with Fourth of July and celebration of freedom, and a lot of, and thankful Thursdays kicking back up, so it's an exciting time of the year here. We've got baseball coming back, and if you're interested in hosting a baseball player, the Walnuts are still looking for a couple of host families, so you can go to the Walnuts' Facebook page and reach out to them if you've got a spare room at home. But it's going to be a fun season, I think, across the board, a great summer in Eldorado, so that's what I've got. If there's nothing else, I consider a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.